Six o'clock, I'd like to call a caucus order. First ordinance is from the Transportation Committee and that's purchase of the bus. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pull this piece of legislation.
Any other comments?
Okay, I don't know if I'll make this comment to let the people in the audience understand what's taking place, that there isn't anybody going in shock.
Yeah.
Three of us went down to Myers Equipment and spoke with the gentleman in Myers Equipment, and he had told us Ford had the state bid price. There was two models of buses down there, there was one called an Eldorado, and there was one called, it was another name, it wasn't the Eldorado. It was the Senator. We liked the Senator because it had the raised floor and a few things on it. We was under the understanding that both were under state bids. Okay? Thankfully, Mr. Grimm contacted the gentleman again the other day, and he said there's some confusion that the Senator is not on state bid. So, we're gonna pull this because the village is bound to a maximum of $50,000 that we can spend without going through a formal bid procedure.
Unless we go state.
Unless we go state bid. So, we've, the Eldorado is state bid, he is gonna get us the Eldorado under the state bid, and it's actually a little bit nicer of us, and it's gonna have everything on it that we want, but it's just gonna be a little bit of a timeframe setback. But, instead of getting in trouble with the auditor's office and getting the clerk in trouble and everything, I'm kinda glad that this was, it would've been found before the, everything was signed and audited and stuff, but it, it's unfortunate that it's a setback, but we're still pursuing the busts. We've got the figures and everything, and actually, with the Eldorado being on the state bid, it's still gonna have the raised floor, it's gonna have all the options and everything, and the gentleman at Myers Equipment, he favored the Eldorado from the get-go anyway, so, and it's actually a little bit less than what we was gonna pay for the other one. But, we just now found this out, and we're pulling it in this way.
Any other comments?
Yes. I'm on, may I, this is first I've heard of this, is this being sent back to committee, being tabled, being pulled, or what is the deal?
I don't know.
I don't know either, I've never heard anything about it.
I was shocked to see that it was coming through committee, because I thought it was coming through council as a whole. I proposed the thing, but it had two means on committee, and this was found out just a matter of a day or two ago. So, I didn't see any need in calling everybody to discuss it when there's been so much opposition over it anyways.
Any other comments? Okay, the next one's from Safety Committee, asking for purchase of 2016 Chevy Caprice police package, comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just like this to go to first reading tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, the next one's also from the Safety Committee, and that's the purchase of 11 firearms from Kiesler's Police Supply Incorporated. Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see this passed this evening.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Yes, um, Chief, did you get the other two quotes from, is that the only one that's attached here, is the case line?
Correct, the other two quotes were given to the clerk for the audit.
And they're higher?
They are.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other comments?
Those will be put with the original, Karen.
Pardon me?
I'll put those with the original.
Okay.
Okay, and the last ordinance is from the Streets Committee, authorizing to Lawrence Town, authorize Trumbull County to develop and advertise bid specs for our 2016 paving program. Comments?
Yes, we'd like to get this passed this evening because the county will be starting soon on their bidding process, and so, it's only a resolution, there's no commitment for money at this point in time, so, we'd like to get this passed so that Dale can go ahead and contact the county and get the, get included on their bidding process.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, I have one comment on this also. Uh, Dale, just, I, we don't know where this is gonna go, but we are getting close to wanting to run sewers to the rest of the community. And I do believe Tate Road is one of the roads you're talking about doing?
Yes, it is.
Do you think that would be wise if we, with this bonus money that's coming in from General Motors and stuff, we might be able to get this debt relief paid for and move forward with sewers? Would it be a problem if we leave Tate Road on there and then, I don't think it'd be wise to run sewer down Tate Road right after it's paid?
Uh, no, not at all, I mean, I wasn't aware of.
Is this just coming out here, and, you know, I didn't even have a chance to talk with Karen and the rest of the committee on this, but I just wanted to bring it out tonight as something for you to think about.
Well, definitely, it's worth considering.
Now, it'll only be the west end of Tate that is not sowed, if you're willing to do a portion of it or something.
I really don't, I'm not, my joint, you know, and if we don't, if we can't, if we can.
I had considered, no, no, I had considered that as well, that maybe that would be something that we could go ahead and pursue some more.
Okay, well.
Of course, I don't serve on utilities, so.
We can, I mean, if we can just be, if we can get the motion to pass this tonight, I mean, this is just, hot rising up to bid, we can change our roads to whatever, whatever we want.
That's what I wanted to bring out here.
Great.
So, we could use this and just use another road?
Yeah, we're not, we're not naming any roads.
Okay.
This is just a resolution allowing them to bid whatever roads that we choose.
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense to pave a road, then have to tear it up.
Right.
Any other comments on this? Hearing none, are there any questions on the minutes and for disposal this evening? Hearing none, are there any questions on the bills? Hearing none, is there anything council would like to discuss at this time? Is there any need for any executive sessions tonight?
I know we had mentioned about a theft, but I don't know if anybody's done any homework on that or not.
Well, if you're referring to the right-of-way issue?
No.
Okay.
I'm referring to, uh, finishing up our Trumbull County lawsuit. Is there any need for an executive session tonight, or you wanna wait for, wait two weeks? But, I think that, Paul was wanting an answer, but there's no sense in going back in there and just having a social hour, if there's facts and figures out there to compare what it would be worth of doing one way or the other. I mean, it would've been nice to have done it, but I'm.
He's not here, am I here?
No. I won't, I won't ask for an executive session then. Everybody should've had two appointments in their box for the red program?
Okay, anything else council wants to discuss? Okay, well, now that you're in the caucus, start the regular meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody from the house this evening. Please stand and join me with Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed in thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we give us our trespasses, as we forgive others who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In his kingdom, our glory forever, amen. Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor Hill, present.
Mr. Bond.
Here.
Mr. Mansell.
Present.
Mr. Ratchett.
Present.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Shealy.
Here.
Mr. Reader.
Present.
Clerk Wang, present.
Treasurer, George Ebling.
Here.
Mr. Abrizino.
Present.
Police Chief Frontmello.
Present.
Fire Chief Travis Heatham. Planning and zoning, economic development, Kelly Borner.
Present.
Parks, buildings, grounds, street commissioner Dale Grum.
Present.
Recreation Marty Gibson.
Here.
Board of Public Affairs. National engineer Eric Chris McGowan.
Present.
Entertainer, motion to excuse, Fire Chief Easton, I believe he is back to work, but he said that he should be getting a day shift here fairly soon, and also, the VPA, no one was available this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Bob, second.
Second.
Second by Jones, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Jones, second. Shealy. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Motion for disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 1st, 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second by Ratchett, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Entertain a motion for payment of the bills.
So moved.
Moved by Reader, second.
Second.
Second by Bond, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Mayor's report, I'll have two rec appointments I'd like to have council confirm this evening, and also, there has been some, I've been having dialogue with Mr. Bill Sidewest from LEC. Uh, we will have a new go-around of legislation, hopefully, Chris has been working on it. Uh, everything we passed at the last meeting last year has some fine tuning. Uh, Chris is taking care of that, I don't exactly know what they are, however, I believe Paul will be taking care of that, and also, there was a slight change in the abatement agreement. Uh, they're gonna be hiring a company to run that, and they're gonna have a couple less employees, uh, once the plan is up and running, and all the people who are writing the checks for either equity or debt, wanna make sure that everything's perfect. It's been the Trumbull County Planning Commission, because when we do a free enter, an enterprise zone agreement, the county has to go through the county first, and when we do a CRA, which is Community Reinvestment Act, a payment agreement, we can do it in-house. But, we need these, uh, legislation, I believe we'll be at the next meeting. Uh, they're looking at, hopefully, closing on this project sometime between the 10th and the 15th of March. Once they close on the project, get all the property transferred, get all the funding, uh, signed off on, uh, they will probably almost start construction immediately once they take possession. Right now, we're down to dotting a couple i's and crossing a couple small t's, but it's been about 25 months, and hopefully, in the next four or five weeks, that project will be off and running. So, the council will, at the next meeting, there will be several pieces of legislation with slight modifications. That's it for the mayor's report. Clerk's report?
No report, Mayor.
Solicitor's report?
No report.
Treasurer's report?
No report.
Okay, no one's here, is here from the VPA? Village engineers?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Chris? Official reports, Police Chief Millhahn.
Uh, just two things, Mr. Mayor, uh, we'd like to remind the public that this Thursday at 6:30 PM at the fire station, we will have another, another crime watch meeting. Um, Thursday's guest speaker will be Trumbull County Probate Judge James Frederica, uh, he'll talk about, uh, probate laws and living wills and things like that, so I think it would be pretty interesting. Um, the only other thing I have is, as, as we all know, we had storming last night, um, I'm gonna say sometime around 8:00, and the, the street department, I believe, has been up since around 9:00 last night. Since that time, we experienced no traffic crashes in Lawrence Town, and I think it's because of the job that the street department did, so I just wanted to recognize that.
Okay. Any questions for Brent? And I can divvy on that, Dale. I know, uh, Facebook was light and lively about it today, but yeah, for the most part, hey, excellent job.
Thank you, and I'll pass it on to the guests.
Okay, any questions for Brent? Fire Chief Easton is not here, planning and zoning administrator and director of economic development.
Kelly.
No report, Mayor.
Any questions for Kelly? Parks, grounds, buildings, street superintendent?
Mr. Graham.
No report.
Any question for Dale? Recreation Marty?
No report.
Any questions for Marty? Bill, do we have any course longer to speak?
No.
Okay, public remarks, if you'd like to make a public remark, after I acknowledge you, please come to the microphone and give your name and address, so we can get it recorded in the minutes correctly. Paul.
Paul Haney, 1873 Salt Springs Road, here in Lawrence Town. I'd like to share with council something that I found on the internet the other night, um, and I'd like to read a paragraph out of it, and it is entitled, The Ohio Village Officers Handbook, that was published by David Yost, Yost, the state auditor, dated March 15th, March of 2015, excuse me. Uh, and the section I want to talk about is underneath the village treasurer, uh, it's section C, powers and duties, paragraph 2, which is titled Accounts and Reports. The treasurer must keep accurate accounts of all money received or dispersed, identifying the amount, date, payer, and payee, and account. The books must provide separate accounts for each fund and appropriation. The treasurer and clerk should maintain the same accounts, since they must reconcile. The treasurer shall settle the accounts for the village council quarterly, and as village council directs. At the first January meeting of village council each year, the treasurer shall report on the village financial condition, including amounts of receipts, disbursements, and accounts. The balance of each fund shall be reported, the treasurer shall also keep a treasury investment account documenting, documenting the investment of the treasury funds, and this is all stated by Ohio Revised Code Sections 733 dot 43, 733 dot 45, 733 dot 47, and 733 dot 14. After reading that paragraph, there's a couple items that I'd like to note is, I don't believe we've had that annual report, and the other thing I'd like to note is that this almost sounds like council is authorized to dictate what is requested of the treasurer to report. Thank you.
Are there any other public remarks? Bruce.
Bruce Platt, 1952 Salt Springs Road, Utility Superintendent here for the village of Lawrence Town. Uh, just let, informing council and, and the audience that we did our disinfectant byproduct sampling, uh, the first week of February, uh, and we received our results from those tests, and the, the one test that, that we were in violation of this past summer was a THM, let me call it, try, you know, the word's too long. It's, uh, it's a THM, trust me. Uh, and that magic number is 80, you are not to be above 80 with a running average. Uh, we got the results from our samples, uh, the sample over at Wood Leonard, I believe, was in the high 50's, uh, and the sample over at Yerkey Young was in the low 60's, so, we're well within the allowable range of, as given to us by the EPA, so, that's some good news for a change, Mayor, and it's.
Thanks.
And if you have any questions, it'll be happy to.
And, I didn't put anybody in shock tonight, Bruce.
I'm glad of that, too, after today.
On, what was it, trihalo metanes or something of that nature?
Yeah, that's.
Methane's a gas, if people are well, their water, will that come out of it?
Uh, no, no, it can only be filtered with like a charcoal filter.
Okay.
Or, or it can be aerated, you know, it will, if you aerate it and, then it disperses to the atmosphere.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, any other public remarks? Hearing none, are there any council remarks? Hearing none, we'll go on to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Ratchett.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Ron? Marge's Buildings, Grounds, General Approvements, Streets and Sidewalks, Mrs. Jones.
We just have the one resolution tonight that we'd like to see passed, so that we can get the bid pack together for paving this summer.
Any questions for Karen? Public Safety and Welfare, Mr. Reader.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two pieces of legislation from the Safety Committee, one we'd like a first reading on dealing with the police cruiser, and then the second, we would like to have passed, dealing with the purchase of the firearms.
Okay, any questions for Don? Public Utilities, Mr. Bond.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have, is you'd ask us to look at the gas aggregation, I see a lot of the same people are here. Tonight, the utility committee has looked at it, I'm glad to be able to tell you that, there's a couple things I think everybody needs to be aware of. One is the senior discount is available, of 10 cents per thousand cubic feet, the phone number on your bill, call them up, advise them, a senior citizen can get put on that if you qualify. The other is, we now have, uh, a cap on it, where you haven't paying as much as over $4. The rate for February is going to be 363, starting in March, the rate will be 228.2 maximum, can flex down through there, through, and this runs through August of this year, at which point, either this contract will need to be redone, it's a three-year contract with Constellation or another, uh, aggregating committee company employed to do this. Uh, we found there had been no negotiated price in effect since September of this year, it is now in effect. And I just wanted to report that, it's also going to be in the village newsletter about the senior citizen part, and I hope our seniors take advantage of that as another, um, way the village is trying to help them out. Thank you.
Any questions for Bob? Okay, Transportation, Recreation, Senior Services, Mr. Shealy.
Yeah, we had one piece of legislation, but just pulling it, Bob, I apologize to you when I found out last night, I should've called you. No, I didn't know.
Okay, any questions for Howard? Bill, we got the first piece of legislation.
From Transportation, Senior Services, Planning and Zoning, and Recreation Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new 2016 Ford Suburban Transit Vehicle through the Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from Myers Equipment Corporation, P860 Akron-Canfield Road, Anfield, Ohio, in the current emergency.
Comments or motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pull this piece of legislation.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to pull this and send it back to committee by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Bond, comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratchett?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy. Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried, just returned to committee. Next, please.
From Safety Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one new 2016 Chevrolet Caprice police motor vehicle through the Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from Peter Chevrolet, 2510 Northmore Oil Drive, Lancaster, Ohio, 43130, in the current emergency.
Comments or motions?
We'd like to have this first reading, right, Don?
Yes.
Hearing none, this ordinance had its first reading, next, please.
From Safety Committee for Emergency Passage. An ordinance authorizing Lawrence Town to purchase 11 firearms from Kiesler's Police Supply Inc., 2802 Stable Mill Road, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130, for the village of Lawrence Town Police Department, in the current emergency.
Comments or motions?
No.
Motion to suspend the rules by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Reader, comments? Or, excuse me, roll call, please. Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratchett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules, or motion to adopt?
I don't know.
Second. Moved by Shealy, second by Bond, comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Ratchett?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, ordinance 17, 2016, next, please.
From Streets, Sidewalks, Public Parks, Buildings, Grounds, General Approvements Committee for Emergency Passage. A resolution authorizing the village of Lawrence Town to authorize Trumbull County to develop and advertise bid specifications for the village of Lawrence Town's 2016 paving program in the current emergency.
Comments or motions?
We would just suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rules by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Shealy, roll call. Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratchett?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to suspend the rules, motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second, Ratchett, comments? Roll call, please. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Ratchett?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays, motion carried to adopt, Resolution 1, 2016. Is there any old business council would like to discuss at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I consider it old business anyhow, just got electric bills for this month from Ohio Edison for the Conkle. Again, we're talking about 400 bucks of this month for electricity, uh, the majority of that, of course, is for the big building, which is pretty much vacant. Wondered how we were coming with, saying what we were going to do with that structure, I know you were supposed to be hearing quickly from Gateway, their interest in it and stuff, but I just wanted to update on that.
He recommended to me?
Yes.
Oh, your phone don't work? You can't call me when you're, during the.
Oh, no, I'm not here, I'm just asking a question, I got this tonight, I got here.
Well, I will tell you, I talked, I talked to Mrs. Jones, she chairs the committee, I talked to Mr. Baber from Eastern Gateway Community College, and he said the guy who was trying to get additional funding for that was supposed to go to Columbus today, and he was unable to go because of the weather. He assured me he would be here by the end of the week, and if we don't hear anything, you know, I don't have any problem turning it over to committee, you know, that was a great deal when oil and gas was going great, but right now, since the oil and gas, you know, we're, we're kinda luckier than people who work at B&amp;M Star because of that issue. So, you know, what council wants to do with that building? I know the bills are adding up, Bob, and, that's part of when you take something for free, well.
I agree, and like I said, the reason I couldn't call you on, is I got this this evening when I got here. Thank you.
Any other old business?
Yeah, I'd like to make a discussion, uh, make a, um, just put something out for you to. Rain bed. Why doesn't council, this has always been done under council as a whole, and I don't oppose it coming to the committee, I sit on the committee with Mrs. Jones, but why don't we have Paul? Okay, Eastern Gateway gave us a proposal, and we never gave them a response other than a phone call, I know, told him, Karen and I actually heard that phone call, it was in one of our meetings that we were in, and the guy happened to call while he was in that meeting. Just as a suggestion, why don't we, as a council, direct Paul to write up a contract? We was told at one time that $4 to $8 a square foot is the going price for a commercial structure of that type down there. Why don't we go on the high end, have Paul write something up and say, we want $8 a square foot, and if they rent it to anybody else, we want 40% of the rental fee? And propose these people something, they're sitting on their end, getting nothing, and I just don't think that's the way you do business with somebody when you're trying to write out a contract. I, I'm in favor of us doing what we had talked about, possibly, if this drops, but if they come back with that high figure like that and sign it, that's money in our pocket that we'll be making. And if they don't want it, and they don't sign it, we just say, sorry, we're moving forward and doing other things with the building.
Well, I think we need to make a decision soon, because the, with the roof situation and everything, if we don't, we're gonna lose all of the improvements we've already put into it.
It's just a suggestion, is all I'm doing, because we've gotta give them a response, I think, it's all, just out of courtesy, there has to be a response, and if council doesn't wanna do that, then let's just close the door on it.
Well, I thought it was discussed that, that we did not want them to sublet anything there.
Well, I don't know if they could get around to sublease, or if they would just be renting stuff, I don't know if it's legal.
Generally, John, Ohio law, if I'm right, uh, if I understand it correctly, favors full possession unless the lease specifically states no subletting.
Okay. And they couldn't rent it then?
Right, I mean, subletting is renting it to another person, and then, because we do that, you get into a situation where you're no longer in control completely. You have control of the primary lease or, but how do you know that his lease conditions are going to comply, and it can get pretty involved, perhaps solicitor would like to comment on that?
Well, we could even put that in there, and, yeah, I'm willing to hear the solicitor too, but I just think, this is just me, I just think we need to respond back with something, and if they say, "No, we can't do that," we know, we shut the door.
I thought we had responded with a number.
No, it was just a phone call. It has nothing-
Well, that was just a phone call, I thought it was some sort of response.
We, we could, we could always have the lease with the, the, with the, the third-party, um, possibility in there, too, you know?
Leasing from us directly.
Leasing from us directly, the third party, leasing part of the building from us.
I mean, if that's what-
How many square feet is this?
Pardon me?
How many square feet is it?
Oh, 'cause I have that somewhere, Bob.
It was close to 11,000, wasn't it, John?
I think so. I think it was around 11,000 square foot. So, if we go like seven or eight, whatever, if we put a high figure out there where we're going to generate money on it, I mean, it don't matter.
We had talked to hundreds of thousands.
Well, we was talking about staying lower. Okay, according to the, uh, Sarah, buyer, go, yeah.
Regional chamber.
Regional chamber. Four to $8 is what they spit out. Low four, high eight.
I just talked with, uh, some people in, in Austintown, and I know that's a different, different community, different setup, but their, their, uh, professional space, which is what you'd call that wood, is renting for 12 to 13 dollars a square foot. That's in Austintown. And I know we don't, we're not Austintown, but, um, you know, so $8 is, is probably cheaper than they get it anywhere else, get that space anywhere else.
Because some of the things that we got to factor in, and I've talked to people on this, okay, we got a roof fitness right now.
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to have to make enough money that we know we can cover repairs to the roof, even on down the road. You have no air conditioning in there, and they're talking about classrooms, so that's going to come back to hit us. Uh, the bathrooms, they're functional, are they nice? No. So, that's probably going to be brought up some-
They're not, they can't assess the warranty.
There's so many things, so we either need to say no to it, and quit coming after the mayor, because this has all fallen in his laps, and we're all council. We all sat, a couple of yens might not have been on when this came on, just like he just said. When the gas was going good, everybody thought something was going to move in there. Gas is dead now, so do we want to drop the ball and say, "No, we're not doing it"? We need, we need to make a decision, instead of constantly fighting over it. And I'm not saying people are fighting, but it just, it just doesn't go away, so let's, let's make it go away. Let's come up with something. Is there any other old business? Hearing one, you call the committee when you get a chance, if we don't hear by the end of the week, we'll let your committee decide what they want to do on it.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, any other old business? Hearing none, new business, I'd like to go first. Artis recommending two substitute instructors, Steph D. Blank and Brett Blank, entertain a motion that has been put on, and I believe this will be for the, uh, fitness center?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Move by Jones, second by Bond, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Uh, Chris, I'm brief, I spoke, you know, about tonight possibly having an executive session. Do you guys have some figures and some facts, and would you still like to go back and have a, a discussion about what we talked on, or could that wait until next council meeting?